The City of Rockaway Beach Planning Commission meeting on Thursday, September 18th at 2025 at 5:00 PM will come to order. Please stand with me and join in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation indivisible, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Let's record who is in attendance. Commissioner Cole.
Present.
Commissioner Hess.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Lanyon.
Yeah.
Commissioner Maxfield.
Here.
Commissioner Winchester.
Here.
Planning Commission liaison McGuinness.
Here.
Mayor McNeely.
Here.
And I, President, President Bill Passell, am present. The next item on the agenda is approval of the August 21st, 2025 meeting minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to those minutes? Hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve the August 21st, 2025 meeting minutes as presented.
I move to present or to approve the August 21st, 2025 meeting minutes as presented.
Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion? Then let's record how commissioners vote. Commissioner Cole.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanyon.
Yes.
Commissioner Maxfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester.
Yes.
And I vote yes, the motion carried. There are no presentations or guests scheduled for this evening. If the city planner have anything to report.
Yes, I have a, I want to give a bit of an update on, on how the planning department is going. I'm settled in, it's been almost three months of me being in the position and I feel like I've very quickly caught up to, to the challenges that we face. Uh, I'm, this, this last month has been, was very occupied with the remand. Uh, that took a lot of staff time and, and, and resources. And while we were doing that, we were also answering calls and, and processing permits. Uh, we had, we had two permits go from beginning to end of, of this last month. Uh, but, uh, in, instead of a more longer staff report, uh, I want to give a presentation and, and just do a recap of what, uh, how the remand went and just, uh, how, open up a conversation here, uh, to, to what happened, what are the implications and, and, and just have a, a conversation. Uh, yeah, oh, thanks, Lance. Uh, so in, in this great presentation, I'm just gonna recap what the city council decision was and what was involved in that decision. Uh, and I, I really want to, to have this, uh, presentation be more of a informal discussion. So if you have any questions at any time, please feel free to raise them. Uh, and I want to answer any, any questions that may, uh, rise. Um, so we were all familiar with exactly what was, uh, in hand, but there was a bit of misinformation in the community of exactly what a remand meant. Uh, so Luba had three options when, when presented the case, which was to sustain, uh, the, the city council decision. They could have reversed the city council's decision or they could have remanded it. And they decided to remand. And what that means is that they, they sent the, the case back to city council to adopt additional findings and provide more information on, on two very specific questions, uh, or specific questions, broad questions, but specific questions, uh, to, uh, the, the information that they were presented. They, they basically said they didn't have enough information to make a decision on either assignment of error. Um, as noted, the, the 2008 decision, PUD decisions, uh, was final and, and was not subject to that review. It was just the, the, uh, planning commission's decision in, uh, 2024 that was a part of that review. Next. So the, the first assignment of error, the first question that Luba asked, uh, for a city council to, to answer was to determine which parts of, of the, the property of the Nidana wave, uh, were subject to the special area wetland zone and what portions were, uh, zoned as residential zone. And for this purpose, uh, we needed to determine, uh, determine the, the location of the zone. So we needed, basically we needed a map to tell us where, what parts of that property were SA zone and what parts were, uh, R1 zone. Uh, importantly, what, what Luba said, and, and this was really changed how staff approached this, is that the SA zone, uh, was a base zone. So we needed to treat it as a base zone, not an overlay zone. Uh, so that, that would, that really influenced, uh, how staff, uh, approached, uh, preparing findings for the first assignment of error. Next question. Oh, yeah, please.
Um, can you tell me the difference between the base zone and an overlay zone, please?
Yeah, so the, uh, the, a, a base zone would be, has firm boundaries that are determined on a map and it, it is the, the foundations of what uses are allowed in that area. An overlay zone, and I, we have, for example, we have a flood hazard overlay zone. So we have, uh, additional requirements for folks that are within the overlay zone, uh, but they still need to meet standards of their base zone.
Okay.
So overlay zone might have multiple, uh, base zones that it covers.
Okay. So, um, i- is one or the other, like, more, um, flexible? So it's a, is a base zone, like, put in stone and an overlay zone, like, more manageable?
The, the, both zones should be determined, uh, on that. Uh, and that was one of the challenges. It's determining this is that we, we have those boundaries, but they weren't clear exactly where those boundaries fell. Uh, one of the things that, you know, how we have historically, how we've historically applied the SA zone is, uh, as a notification system for DSL to be involved in, in the licensing and make sure that DSL, uh, and, and present and Army Corps of Engineers have the right information to permit construction. Uh, so we have historically allowed residential uses in which now would be in the base zone that we wouldn't allow residential uses.
Okay. So it, we've evolved into a little bit more stricter adherence to?
We're, I, I wouldn't, I wouldn't use the word evolve, but we have clarity as to the direction that we need to go. We, I, there hasn't been really any changes to our, our code or, or, uh, it's really how we understand and interpret.
Interpreting it.
Yeah.
I think you kind of just touched on the question that I had. We don't have an ordinance that says an SA zone is treated as an overlay zone. Um, it was basically just continuing how prior planners had interpreted, um, what, how we treated it, correct?
Yeah, go, going back decades.
Right. So now that we have, um, Luba saying that the SA zone is to be treated as a base zone, we, that's where we have clarity.
So now, now we're, we're clear. We, we do have a, a wetland notification overlay zone that operates in how we were applying, uh, certain facts of, of the SA as a base zone. So there are parts that haven't mapped as wetlands that are not in the SA zone. We still have a notification process with DSL.
Okay. Um, does the, the city still have, does the city need to do some new mapping now?
That's a good question. And that's definitely one of the things that I, I want to talk about in, in the meeting today.
Okay, okay. Good.
Okay. Uh, yeah, and, yeah, that, that, that's definitely something that came up in, in this, by doing this work is, uh, the need for, for maps. Um, so these, uh, on the screen are the, 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 in, in the, uh?
One more question.
If they're?
Oh, apologies, yeah. Uh, I, I think this is the obvious answer, but in their, in their Phase Two plat map, only those lots with that, with that bolded line around are in the base SA zone.
Well, so that, that was the question. Those, those were the only lots that we were making a determination on, uh, because those were the lots that were subject to the 2024 decision. All the other lots that are not bolded, we can see that they are in the SA zone, but that was part of the 20, 2008 decision. So we, we didn't, we weren't touching those and we're making a determination.
This doesn't mean that's the only base, SA base zone lots. Some of the others may also be in an SA base zone.
Yeah, yeah. And we, we see that all the, um, lots that are north of the, the street are in the SA zone. Uh, we'll, we'll look at some of the maps. Uh, but at, at the time of making the, the decision, we were really just focusing on, on determining whether or not those lots were. Uh, well?
As the decision the planning commission made was related to those lots.
Yeah, to, to those lots. Then, then, when this takes us off to perfectly to the second assignment of error, but I'll answer your question.
Along with having new maps, will the city be looking at doing a new wetland survey?
That, that's definitely something we can consider and, and look at what we would need to do for, in order for that to happen. I, I know, um, and this opens up the question of, okay, now that the SA zone is a base zone, modifying the boundaries of that zone, uh, involved a, a comprehensive plan revision. Uh, and it's not so much that, you know, a new wetland map wouldn't require, wouldn't, well, it might be beneficial for us to consider remapping what the areas of the SA zone are. Uh, doing that map process wouldn't necessarily change the SA zone's, uh, boundary. So that, that's one of the things that, that comes out of, of the decisions that in the SA zone, it, it is not, um, pivotal whether or not there are actual wetlands or statutory wetlands in that zone, even if those lots are, you know, buildable, they're not wetland lots, they're still in the SA zone, uh, which would not allow residential units to go there. So that's another, another implication to this, uh, application. And we can come back to the first assignment of error, um, but I want to talk a little bit briefly about the second assignment of error to? Thank you. Uh, so the, the second assignment of error was, um, definitely more impactful to, while the first assignment of error is impactful for our, on, like, our reading, the second assignment of error was very impactful for the application. Uh, this assignment of error was determining whether or not the original 2008 planning and development, uh, was valid or if it had expired. And Luba specifically was asking us whether or not, uh, a condition of approval that was included in the original planned unit development applied to the second phase. Um, and then that opened up a question of, it basically came down to whether or not we had a approved plat, tentative plat for the second phase in 2008. And the answer was yes, we did have that plat. So we could say that that condition of approval, uh, had applied to, to the, uh, planned unit development. Uh, so it, it was a very, like, uh, record specific question, uh, of what exactly happened in 2008. What was the language? We were like, w- inclusion or absence of one word would really affect how we were interpreting. So it was a, it was a definitely a, a, interesting assignment of error to, to answer. But what this assignment of error basically said is that in order for this planning and development to go forward, they need to come back to us and restart the process. Uh, so the, the 2008 approval has expired and it's no longer, um, a, a, a valid, uh, application. Uh, so what that would mean for all the other lots, then if they came back, then we would look at all the lots for that area. Um, and, uh, yeah. Um, so the, the city council's decision was, was to reverse the, the planning commission's July 18th, 2024 decision, uh, and in doing so denied the application, uh, for, for the, the PUD. That application was, again, to expand, uh, some of the lots and, uh, mainly that, that was the, it for that application, but it had ramifications beyond it.
May I?
Yeah, of course.
Um, and I'm sorry if it's a stupid question, but does that mean that the developer does not have any permission to develop that plot, build on it, unless they come back or, or what? They have to come back one way or another to ask permission and, and the planning commission and whatever has to decide if they give them. But it's based on the new, but, but our, the decision will be based on the new set of rules.
Correct, yeah. Basically, they would need to start from scratch on the planning and development, uh, applications, as well as if they want to do subdivision. You know, right now, if it, it opens up their possibility doors to do a, a new, uh, a new project altogether, uh, could look very different from what they had proposed in 2008. Uh, but they, they would, we would apply all the current rules that we have right now or whenever they submitted in application.
So they're basically starting over.
They would have to, yeah. I haven't received an application from them yet. And again, they, the process to appeal the city council's decision is still open. So they, there's still that possibility that this goes back to the?
Right. You could appeal the decision. Go ahead. Because, uh, there are roads and utilities, it's still the city's responsibility, right? Even though it's not our property, but those roads, that's our infrastructure.
Those, uh, uh, from my understanding, the majority of those roads were, uh, became public right of ways. So tho- those would be, um, from, from my understanding, those are now, yes, public, public roads.
Okay. And the utility hookups that everyone's, who takes care of what?
Yeah. Yeah, and I know that, and there's, they did a lot of the improvements, so there's already hookups for, uh, residential units there. Um, and it's the, again, south of the road is all zoned residential, so all that would be, uh, good to go, but they would need, again, to do a new proposal.
Mm-hmm. So south of the road is not in the SA zone?
Yeah, correct.
So it's a regular zone that, but just our, eh?
Yeah, yeah. And, and, uh, yeah, there's, um, yeah, it's, I think it's under our, our one residential.
The one, excuse me.
Uh, I, I'm not, again, I, when, once we received an application, we'd go through the process of a full review and whether or not there is statutory wetlands in that area or not, that, that would begin that.
So that, so we don't even know the answer to that yet.
Yeah, I see.
Sure.
I, I mean, they've, they've submitted already, uh, wetland delineations, so we have an idea, uh, of, of what areas are statutory wetlands and what are not. To, to that question, like, it's not going to mean, does the city need to delineate a, a map of this is the SA zone and that's a permanent until officially revised or? Cause the whole Nidana Beach area was basically created by the jetty, right? It's all filling in and I imagine the hydrology is in motion all the time and like, what's a wetland now might not be in 10 years or might, you know, expand? Like, do we have to constantly update the boundaries of that every 10 years or can we have a standard that says like, you know, if it's in a wetland, it needs to be determined on a case by case basis? Yeah, so, uh, for, that's a great question. Uh, if we wanted, these are two options that we would have. We could have a firm boundary that would be mapped. Right now, we're, we're going with the, the firm boundary is the boundary that was established in 1992. Uh, we're, had to do some interpretation of what exactly that, where that line was. Uh, but that's technically our official line. Uh, if, if, you know, we wanted to do in the future a case by case basis, we could, we would want to remove the SA zone as a base zone and have the overlay zone for that area. Or if you wanted to have a strict boundary, then we, it would just remain a base zone. Uh, and again, it, the base zone, uh, it, it, it is not, whether or not there's an actual wetland, it, it is not, uh, important determining e- exactly, uh, the line, the, the zone line. Similarly to how we have lakes in residential areas that are zoned as residential, we'd have the same where there are potentially buildable lots that are zoned, um, SA and, and not, we wouldn't allow, uh, construction of them.
Are there any implications for homeowners in the Phase One, Nidana Wave Phase One from this decision?
Yeah, that, I, I remember that came up and, and during the, the, the beating and I checked with our legal counsel and, and, uh, the applicant had implied that they would be, uh, illegal structures, uh, but the precedent, the legal precedent would be for them to be non-conforming. So we didn't, we wouldn't have to do like a abatement or anything like that. It, they would be non-conforming structures, um, since they, they were permitted. Um, the implication of that is if, if they wanted to expand, uh, of the structure, then they would need to come to the planning commission for a variance, um, or, or a conditional use even, because it would not be a, a use allowed or even a conditional use allowed. But the, the, they could, uh, remodel the structure as long as they don't change the footprint of it and, or anything that would increase the non-conformity of the structure, which is very tricky since we don't allow residential uses either outright or conditional for the zone.
So, and so that would mean that if someone in that area that had Phase One homes, if they wanted to build a garage beside their home or something, that would be an additional structure?
Yeah, and that would not be, not be allowed. Uh, a, a path forward, uh, for, for them would be to come to the city council and apply for a rezone, uh, uh, to amend the comprehensive plan, uh, and, and have those be considered residential, uh, lots. Uh, alternatively, we can, when we, if we want to remap this area, we can consider whether or not we want to change the, the, uh, location of the SA zone or the R1 zone.
Are there any plans to notify those homeowners of the implications so they're aware that now they need to operate differently, um, than they would have operated before this decision?
Yeah, we, we haven't considered that. Uh, they, they would have to go through any of the zoning permitting process and at that point we would notify them. It's, it's not a, a measure 56 notice or anything like that.
Right, right. No, I wasn't thinking a measure.
Technically, yeah, technically.
A previously notice let you know, your world is now changed.
Yeah. And there, there, and again, it's not just that area, there are other residences, uh, around Rockaway that are in the SA zone.
That have the same implications.
Yeah, yeah. Again, this is something we have historically applied citywide, not just in the, yeah.
Explain one more time, I know you did, but of how, what the language issue was that made it so that the Phase Two was, had expired?
Yeah.
We spent so much time on that and I'm like, I have, so anyway, so if you could just give like a hair, a detail, cause it was a, yeah, concern of ours and, yeah.
I, I definitely, uh, one of the things that is, it's not coming from our code or, 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 uh, the, our zoning ordinance in general, and, and that's what we found in 2004 is that, 2000, 2024, uh, that, that, you know, our code doesn't have this be, uh, expire. It, it was Oregon shores when they, uh, appealed the case to, to Luba, uh, brought attention to this condition of approval, uh, which is a, was a, it's a bit of an odd condition of approval for, for, uh, that was included in the planned unit development. It, it was a condition to the, the plating. Uh, so the, the precise language of, of them, and I can, um, find it here, but the, the exact language of that condition of approval is, "The developer shall complete the improvements within one year of tentative plan approval unless an extension is granted by the city to complete improvements, period. Final plat review shall conform to procedures of the Rockaway Beach zoning ordinance, Article 10 and Article 13." So that first, uh, um, that first sentence was, how to dive deep into one year of tentative plan, what, what do they, what do we, uh, think the planning commission meant by, uh, tentative plan approval? Uh, and, you know, whether or not that tentative plan approval happened? Uh, and did that tend, by saying tentative plan approval, are they referring to the whole planning and development or did they refer to only Phase One or only Phase Two? Um, and like, one of the complications of, of the, this overall investigation is that the process that went, uh, about to approve the PUD was not, uh, necessarily standard process. They approved the whole PUD and then they came back, uh, to, to do that revision for phases. So they had had a tentative, uh, plan approval and they had a final, uh, plan approval and then they came back and revised both the tentative and the final plan to allow for phasing, which is not, it, it is not a usual process and brought a lot of different complications with it.
And it might be a good time to, to mention, you all might, might not be aware, when this went before Luba, the applicant missed a deadline and so they weren't able to participate in Luba's hearing. And so they, they might've had, uh, some evidence or documents that, that might've changed Luba's, Luba's opinion, but it was never heard. And, and so, uh, in my opinion, Luba had a, a kind of a, a one-sided hearing and that, that probably contributed to some of the, some of their findings and that their remand.
So on that, like, what, um, from the applicant's side of things, is, is going back to Luba their only remedy or is a lawsuit against the city possible? Like, what, what do we expect as next steps? Um, yeah, that's, that's a good question. I'm not, I'm, that would be a question for our legal team. I, I, my understanding is that they would appeal it to, to Luba and that would be a, a recourse, uh, right now that, I, I don't know that if they did not appeal to Luba, if they would have another path. But that, that, I think, from my understanding, that, that, that is now the, the legal path for them. Um, and if, you know, if they, if they believe that we made a mistake, then they could take it up with Luba and Luba could, uh, they could always remand it back to us.
Our process was solid and, and the best chances for them to go to Luba and keep it out of court.
And what is the deadline for them to, uh, reman, to take it back, appeal to Luba again, or appeal the city council's decision to Luba? What, what is, um, the deadline for that? How many days do they have?
Yeah, that, that is a fantastic question. I, I was trying to figure that out myself. From my understanding, it's around 21 days from when, when they receive, when we've had that final order, but I don't want to be quoted on this because I, I'm not confident whether or not it's from the hearing or the final order. Uh, I, yeah, it's something I'm, want to talk with our legal, uh, team about. Uh, but at, at this point, it's in the applicant's hands to, to find out exactly when they need to do it. We're, in terms of, in terms of, uh, right now, we're, we're done, uh, on our end.
I'm go- going back to the, um, second assignment of air, um, the, whether the condition won't apply to the second phase. Um, it was my understanding when I was listening to the city council meeting that there actually was some additional evidence, uh, that you were able to uncover by listening to some old tapes or something like that, um, that shows some intent that the phase, the second phase was also to be done within one year, isn't that true?
Yeah, so one of the things, um, which was, uh, very lucky for us that we still have those tapes because it wasn't, it's not our policy to retain that information for this long. Uh, uh, one of the things in that was a conversation between the mayor at the time and the planner, uh, during the city council decision to, uh, designate the PUD overlay zone. And in that conversation, the planner implied that, uh, they had one year, uh, to do the improvements. Uh, there was a lot of vagueness within that, uh, tape, so it was like, it was circumstantial, uh, but it did show an intent for, for there to be at least a expiration or, or an end, uh, to, to the, um, to the timeframe.
Okay. Thank you. Perfect example of, we really value the research that you put into it and the minutia. So thank you again very much.
Do we know if there are any other zombie permits like this from decades past? What do you know? Uh, the, I, I have, um, I have an approach about, uh, other approvals that happened in 2008. Uh, however, they, they're, they have expired, uh, so that they have had, uh, some old permits resurface and, and whether or not the, the, they're still valid or, or not. But, uh, our code, our code was, is clear, was clear about that one. It wasn't, uh, uh, there was, there was no gray area for, for that one that someone approached me about.
I just wanted to comment that I was around in 2008. Um, we had property, South Town, and it was a big slump, you know, in our world economy and Rockaway just cratered as far as housing, um, uh, you know? We were, we were really low and you couldn't, uh, you know, developers were having a lot of trouble selling property that they created. And so that's why maybe there's even more, like, there's more than one, uh, plotted or, you know, um, out there that they just stopped.
Yeah, no, the, yeah, I, I, that's, I think, I believe is what happened with the application that approached me. Uh, yeah, it's definitely, definitely something that happened, yeah.
But there's, there were, there were four or five developments similar to this one around that timeframe that were approved and I've been watching them, uh, expire over, over the years. And this, this was, as, as far as I know, this was the last one, that was outstanding. Yeah.
Do different permits have different expiration dates?
Uh, different processes, yeah. Uh, our, our zoning permit, for example, is, is one year valid for one year, uh, and they, so basically applicants have one year to apply for building permit and that can be extended, uh, but only once from, from what I understand. Um, but yeah, the, uh, multi, uh, multi-unit city criteria is another one that has a one year expiration. Um, the planning and development doesn't have a firm expiration date, it's supposed to be established through the process and it's meant to be flexible based on the needs of the? And it's meant to be flexible based on the needs of the project.
Sometimes the property will will change hands or other other things. Other things will happen where we can toss it off.
Yeah, and so we we talked a bit about the implications already. So one is the narrative with C F R R, as a plan and zoning map, again, it was adopted nineteen ninety two. There our code has a process for updating the map, which is supposed to happen every time we we do a holistic review of our comprehensive plan for D L C D. But D L C D stopped requiring us to do that process several several decades now, I think, I believe. So we we need to figure out what our our process is going to be to to update the the map. One of the benefits is that we do have a parcel specific zoning map, which is our G I S tool. So a possibility, if we didn't want to do any large changes now, is to adopt that J S tool as our official zoning and comprehensive plan map. But since we're going through wanting to update the comprehensive plan, we're kind of a chicken and egg situation. Do we want to adopt the map, a new map now? Do we want to wait till we do the comprehensive plan updates? So there there is a bit of of conversation we can have, and this is where I'd appreciate direction. And I again, we it's a whole comprehensive plan update since this map is is combined our comprehensive plan map and our zoning map. So it's not it's not a straightforward process. It it will be a little bit staff resource intensive to go through the notification to D L C D. So I just want to put that out there.
And there's the upcoming FEMA overlay, yeah.
And there's that conversation.
Where are where is the staff in the process of the comprehensive plan update? I mean, it's in the strategic plan and city council has asked for it. But I understand it's enormously expensive and time consuming. Where are we?
Yeah, we're at this moment, we're waiting to hear back from D L C D on our the grant that we applied for. We're expected to hear back at the end of this month. And that will give us a clear sense of direction of whether we're doing this on our own or trying to find funding elsewhere. While we we do updates or if we're going to have consultants to help us. And that really affects the timeline very drastically and and also the scope of what we can do and when. We talked about the the application of the S A zone and how that has not changed, but how we we've reinterpreted that application. And then most of the implications of this decision were specific to the Nidana wave planning unit development. And with that, I I just wanted to do these were a couple of the findings that were attached to the staff report and kind of showing one of the the complications that we had trying to decide the the map the the zone boundary for this location. Appendix E is the comprehensive plan map as we have it now. I like scaled it to to fit the geography, but there were a lot of issues from the railroad wasn't located where the railroad is actually located or Highway one oh one. The boundaries of of the city, city limits, or in this case, urban growth boundary were not lining up. So I could do some distortion to have a better lineup of those two, which would be appendix F. But that when it was time intensive to try to get it right, and it's still not perfect. So it's not it's not a usable map and it's not really the process that we go about when we're issuing zoning permits. We really rely on our J S tool.
Is it J S tool?
A J S stands for geographic information systems. It's a mapping tool. It's it's publicly accessible. And this is this is what it it looks like. It's parcel specific.
I've looked at it.
Yeah, and this I'm I'm trying to find a little more information of how this layer, the zoning layer was developed. But it began they began working on it in two thousand and ten. And the layer that we have was was first prepared in two thousand and fifteen. And it's most the most current layer reflects most of the changes that have happened even since two thousand and fifteen. And we update the the J S tool at a quarterly period.
And the G I S is the map that's on the website.
Tillamook County.
Tillamook County is also the same. During the the hearing, there was a little bit, it seemed the applicant was calling it a as a if this zone of this layer, this map layer was owned by the county, but this is actually information we provided them. So this is this is something that was prepared by the city.
It'd be something for the city to consider putting a moratorium on permits for specific areas because it's going to be costly to evaluate our maps, I would imagine. And that wetland survey and stuff like that, and just to make sure that we're safe and covered to say we we have a few outstanding areas which we need to clarify and cannot are unable to at this point.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting question. I think city council would want me to consider it. I think that the challenge would be deciding which areas are going to be part of the moratorium and which areas are not. And a citywide moratorium, I don't believe it would be in our benefit.
The S A zone itself, though, is in some ways is is moratorium of itself.
Yeah.
If you're if the if the plot that you are trying to develop falls in an S A zone, right, then there's going to be trouble.
Yeah, no, no, no building, no residential development. We we allow some development in the S A zone, but it's recreational. We're talking about walking paths and maybe pushing and you could get a gazebo or something, but that would be like a very creative.
Right, right.
Yeah, in terms of adopting a moratorium, I think it'd be better to consider adopting a map prior or trying to resolve this as soon. I I'd rather have us resolve, adopt the J S tool as our official comprehensive plan map than have a moratorium. But it's definitely, you know, if we do want to do comprehensive plan changes that are that will affect the map in one way or another. It'd be we'd be going through the same process twice in a very short period of time.
I'm sorry.
I I'm happy to answer any other questions or we'll move on with the agenda.
Thank you. Okay, well, we have no public hearings scheduled, so and no old business has been scheduled. So we'll move on to new business. Invite city planner Tapia to share his presentation on Tillamook County's housing needs analysis.
Moving right on.
With more slides.
Yeah, again, I've I guess this has sort of been conversed in the last topic, but with with Luke, we were talking about our next meeting. When we meet again, we'll have for you a our long term plan of what we're what we're going to tackle and when. So I do apologize that this is a very presentation heavy meeting. But our a lot of staff time is taken on the remand again. All right, so again, I want to take this presentation as well as as discussion as we did our last. I'm going to be talking specifically about the a lot of data that was included as part of the Tillamook County's housing needs analysis. I'm a data nerd, so I I really like talking about this. I like going into it. So I I hope we can have in depth conversations about what would otherwise be otherwise be a very dry subject.
I tell you, I'm not a data nerd, but I thought this was really fascinating. What the problem, I think that really good information that will be very useful to the plan.
Yeah, and and a lot of it's just helpful for us to know where we're at and what we what we're trying to accomplish and have a good, clear path. When we tried, when we start considering the set goals for our comprehensive plan and and also when we start talking about the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis more general. This presentation is building up on our presentation from last meeting a little bit.
My apologies, Chair, I just wanted to interject. I'm I believe I left off your script. We did have a period before this for opportunity for public input on non agenda items. I know we have an in person guest. We do have an online guest with a hand raised.
Okay.
Like to apologize now.
Let's recognize then our online guest to be able to give testimony.
Hello?
Yep, we got you.
Please state your name and and city of residence for the record.
Daniel from Rockaway Beach. Can you please make the screen show the electronic egg so I can see the timer?
The view of the council is visible on the screen, so you may have to modify your zoom settings if it doesn't appear to you.
It's showing the Tillamook County Housing Needs Analysis, so it looks like the presentation is showing. Just want to make sure I stay within the timeframe. There we go. All right, thank you. Good afternoon, planning commissioners. Thank you for your time. I've been reflecting on how the city fills job openings. And I can't help but wonder, why not share all employment opportunities with the public? The city website calls itself an equal opportunity employer, yet many of the most important positions, city manager, finance director, past city planner, current public works director, were never publicly posted. In fact, the city has no written guidelines for hiring at all. Advertising all employment opportunities publicly is the simplest way to ensure fairness, transparency and trust. When positions are filled quietly, qualified people are excluded and residents question whether hiring is fair. That weakens our city. Advertising all open positions, by contrast, broadens the talent pool, increases diversity and shows that the city values equity and accountability. Jobs are seen as earned, not handed out behind closed doors. Some argue that hiring from within is vital for staff growth, and I agree. But public posting supports internal promotion. It gives everyone, including internal candidates, a fair chance to compete and validates promotions as merit based, which strengthens morale. Other cities already treat public job postings as standard practice because it protects public trust and builds stronger institutions. We should expect no less here. Public service jobs belong to the people. The people deserve to know when those opportunities are available. I respectfully ask the city to adopt an ordinance requiring every job opening to be publicly advertised. So opportunities remain fair, transparent and open to all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. With that, we can go to our presentation on housing needs analysis.
No worries. So I'm I'm just going to go ahead and jump in. So the the document that was shared in the packet is the Tillamook County Housing Needs Analysis. It's technically an update. They initially did this project in two thousand and nineteen, which was meant to kind of set them a base layer of data so they could then analyze how trend what trends in within the county. So they created this update that captures some of the trends, particularly in in housing and and population. It is one of the things that I found interesting about this document and one of the reasons I wanted to bring it here tonight is that there's also a policy discussion towards the end where they present a proposal or preliminary policy ideas for the what is the housing production strategy and it's formatted as a housing production strategy. So it's a good opportunity to begin thinking and and having that conversation of what do we want to include in our housing production strategy and you know, that could be either a city specific housing production strategy or a county production strategy, depending on how we end up taking on this project with the county. And I'll advocate either way as as you all see fit. It's a very data forward packet. It has a little bit of of narrative. But for me, I I found interesting the the tables and the graphics to really help understand what is what what are the conditions in in Rockaway? Next slide. So again, bringing a little bit about what we talked about in our last meeting, this is part of the determining housing need step of the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. In the future, we're looking at the housing capacity analysis and housing production strategy. But right now it's specific to the housing need. And I'm going to talk about I'm going to talk about both the numbers that Oregon Housing Needs Analysis presented to us for what they estimate are what we need to be planning for for housing. And then the contextualized housing needs is of the county housing needs analysis, this document is a version of what a contextualized contextualized housing needs analysis would look like. It's really breaking down the demographics of the city and trying to understand based on demographics, what is our what what do our housing numbers mean? So a little bit of want to provide a little context to to data and and not just this data, but data in general. But it is, we're working with the the best and most accurate and current data. However, there are four small jurisdictions such as ours, the margin of error for a lot of these data points is is very large. It's not something that was a convert wasn't a talking point in the report. But I I looked at the base data that they are using in the report and and the margin of error is very large and it's that's normal for cities that are a small population. And so, well, this there's a lot of issues with the data. We can still make data informed decisions that are incomplete picture, but it's better than no picture at all.
Wait, is it what is the basic data sources ACS data?
Yeah, they if you they they combined, it was P S U's population forecasting data. It was A C S American Community Survey data. It was biennial census data and it's also Zillow data that I saw. So it was it was a bit of a combination of different data sources. And then they also did their own projections based on on assumptions. So some of the data is also their their own. So what I want to drive home is that the data is an abstraction of reality. The best way to know what is happening with residents is to talk to residents. And hopefully that is something that we'll we'll include in our our planning efforts in the future. All right, so I'm the way that I structured this presentation is that I I pulled out all the charts that had Rockaway mentioned. I drew an arrow to where Rockaway is mentioned, so we can talk specifically about Rockaway. But each slide is a different data chart. So we can pause at any one of these slides and we can just discuss and and I want to hear what everyone's opinion was of the data. So the first one is a population growth data. I thought this was interesting because it it kind of created a forecast. This is using the P S U population research center data of how person wise headcount how Rockaway is is planned to grow. And we are expected to grow within the next twenty year period. I included the current estimated population, which is a thousand five hundred residents. So we're we're looking at at changes even from that number, which is a little bit old at this point, two thousand and twenty three to to this year. So, yeah, please.
So when I was looking at this table, one of my thoughts was is this number being constrained by the lack of housing? And then later, when they do their scenario B, they sort of address that and suggest that it is constraining growth because more people might come here if we had more housing available. I hope that was interesting.
No, it's definitely a interesting like data problem. I'm not I'm not fit to answer that question.
No, I just.
But it is, you know, we're 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 making an assumption that, you know, growth in the past has been uninhibited. And so in the future, that is going to be the case. And I definitely housing access to housing plays a large role in in a lot of these demographics. And I think that's one of the reasons why the demographics varies from different cities is, you know, different cities have approached housing differently or or not. And so we have different scenarios that we can kind of compare. It's definitely interesting. One of the things that I was curious is, you know, this is a this is a total headcount, but what does that mean for households? How many households would we be expecting? And that plays into that determining the housing need in the future. And, you know, in general questions, how are we preparing and planning for this growth? And that comes again to the question of access to housing. Any questions, or should we move to the next comments?
Well, when I looked at this exhibit too, I thought maybe they came to the aggregate, the percentages at the end, based on what had happened, you know, in prior years. But that's not the case. They don't take a look at what's happened and how, you know, the trajectory of our growth has happened.
Yeah, I know a little bit about how PSU does their data population forecast. And they have a more complex system where they take into account like birth rates and death rates, as well as people moving in or people moving out. It's a complex model that they apply. So there is definitely some like trend, growth trend that goes into that calculation, but it's not exactly like, okay, here's how we've grown. And it's not a straight, they don't assume it's a straight growth line.
Okay, thanks.
So to Mayor Mew's point, constraint on population by a bill. And to your point about the data quality, I think that like one thing to keep in mind is that like this is just downscaled from statewide projections, which are probably pretty good for like macro forecasting what's happening state. But we're such a small, like, Rockaway really exists almost independently of those macro forces in the sense that like, if we built no housing in Rockaway, it wouldn't impact the regional needs for housing because the population of millions wouldn't notice. And if we built 10 times as much housing as required, it would all get filled up because there's like an outside external pressure for housing. So we can really, like, we don't have to guide our decisions in Rockaway based on these forecasts. We could make the decision based on what we think is best for Rockaway. Like, in 2045, we could have 10,000 people living in Rockaway if we wanted to. They would, you know, if we built the housing. Not advocating for that, but I'm saying like, we're so a tiny drop in the bucket that like, we can plan our future independent of these macro trends, where Beaverton couldn't decide to double their population, we can, you know.
Yeah, and this will come again in a lot of the different charts. And so definitely a trend where Rockaway experiences a lot of outside forces, which you're referring to of like, there's demand to be here. And it manifests in a lot of different ways of both long-term residents and also short-term visitors and whatnot.
Well, I guess just my point being that like a large city needs to match their growth to regional macro numbers. But a tiny city like Rockaway can greatly exceed regional projections and still absorb population because there's so much more supply outside of us if we wanted to. No.
So the next one, sorry, the graph's a little small, but the next one is the population by age. I thought this was definitely an interesting chart to understand the different needs for different communities. Again, the margin of error is large, but it's a good sense of what happens in Rockaway. And one of the things that I noticed was that it's a very age-diverse community. We have a lot of, from young folks to seniors. So our housing, the implication is that we need also a diverse range of housing options. And I included this small chart that was prepared by Eco Northwest, which kind of captures this idea that throughout a person's lifetime, housing needs change as households change in size and economic situations, you know, reflect. I like this chart because it tracks my own lived experience. And I wonder if it also for others, but the housing need does shift for different age populations.
I think this is actually good news for Rockaway Beach. I look at Manzanita, and that's a population that's aging out, which has a whole different set of implications for how they move forward. Whereas your point that we have a much more diverse spread of ages, which I think is a good thing for Rockaway Beach, yeah.
When you say there's a large margin of error, how do we interpret something like this with that? Does that mean what we're looking at is kind of right?
Yeah, my interpretation is that this is a solid guess of what it would be like. You know, if we, and this is based on American Community Survey. So it involves, I won't get into it. It involves a projection, projecting as well.
Okay, seems fairly accurate.
Yeah, if we did like a headcount, probably we'd be off. Like, there might be 100 more 0- to 19-year-old. And it wouldn't, you know, have a drastic play, but the ratios should be.
Fairly, okay.
Yeah, a good guess.
Yeah.
And I think I heard you mention earlier that PSU's population studies was used as part of the material for this. And PSU's population studies is what is the official study, or studies that the state of Oregon uses.
Yeah, that's correct.
Some alignment.
It's authoritative. It's an authoritative estimate. And it has a big implication on how we do calculate all the subsequent studies. That's sort of like the number we use for the buildable lands inventory and then a lot of these projections for housing. So yeah, I think there's definitely a lot of, we can make, we have the power to make the reality. We can really drive the future of Rockaway through our decision-making. We're not, you know, it's a forecast, not a crystal ball. What an authoritative crystal. Right, so this is the average household size for Rockaway and includes Oregon and Tillamook County. I thought this was interesting because based on the, if we did a very crude analysis, we could estimate how many household or housing units we would need based on population forecast. And this number, again, it is not, this expected new households, you'll see it's a credible undercount when compared to the other studies. But you know, if we did a very crude analysis of, here's our trends in the household size, here's how many people we're expecting, we would need 136 new housing units. And that's just like based on population growth. There's a lot more complexity to it, and that's what we'll go into the official numbers of housing need. But I thought it was interesting as a comparison point between Rockaway and other cities. We are closer to the Tillamook-wide trend on housing size. So this one is the median household income. And this was definitely one that I thought was interesting. Shocking a little bit, but not too much, I guess. Within the, you know, we have the diversity of ages. It kind of makes sense that we would have a lower median household income compared to Oregon. But it's interesting that we are on the lower side for other cities in the area when it comes to income. And then one thing to note is that income and wealth are not synonymous. A person may be wealthy and not have a large income, or one could have a large income and not be wealthy. But it's a good estimation as to purchasing power as well as ability to access housing. So one of the things that we'll see in the other charts is that they relate the income of our population with the cost of housing. Though that's really what I find most interesting.
Is there any, I didn't see it here, like percentage retirees? Because there's a lot of people that can move here and buy an expensive house, and they're on a fixed income.
Yeah, and that's definitely one of the, like, that's one of the reasons why I mentioned the income and wealth being different is that with senior populations have usually more wealth as a trend than younger populations, but not being on a fixed income. So in this, it would drive down the average income.
But that's not working in Manzanita.
And yeah, that's.
Because they've got the biggest percentage of older people, and they have the highest.
That's real, that's passive income, people living off.
Yeah, because that's wealth versus income, because, so.
Well, I mean, any analysis that matches incomes to housing costs has to account for the fact that a lot of people, their housing, ability to purchase housing is not constrained by their income, it's constrained by their network, their sale of their own other house.
Exactly, yes.
I, it's concerning. Yeah, and I think it also explains a lot, Jason, what you just said about Manzanita, because people move there only if they can afford the higher cost of housing. And if they can't afford the higher cost of housing, then they look for places like Wheeler or Rockaway.
But it also makes you say to your, you know, I mean, what kind of housing should we be, you know, should developers be building here? Obviously, not the dream houses.
Yeah, and we'll talk about that breakout.
More of the middle-income homes, which is basically the new, you know, the new construction that happens here.
Yeah. Predicting the future of my presentation. We'll talk about the breakdown and what our housing needs are specifically to Rockaway. I appreciate it. Thanks. So here, this is a, we saw the average for income. This is a breakdown, and this helps us understand like, what is the bell curve of that distribution of income? So, yeah, we see that for Manzanita, there's definitely, you know, the 10,000 or 100,000 and more annual income compared to Rockaway, which is definitely changing the percentage of the average household income. Yeah, another thing I found interesting about this one is that, again, also income diverse, which could also line up with age. You know, we don't expect three-year-olds to have an income above 20,000, 24,000 a year. But so there's definitely some tracking for age. But again, we'll see a little bit more how the relationship between income and housing further on. So in terms of housing type diversity, and this coming up again with this conversation of different needs for different household, different housing needs for different households, we see that overall, the trend is that there's a lot of single-family detached units. And this is a countrywide trend, and it holds for Oregon and Tillamook. But within Rockaway, again, we see that we have a very high amount of single-family detached, which tends to be more inaccessible compared to other housing units, although that is not always the case. One of the things that I found interesting here is that duplexes didn't quite fall into any of these categories besides the mobile home and other. So the, I don't know, and to the question earlier before we started the meeting, you know, is it true that we have that many more mobile homes? I think part of it is that the other category is carrying a lot of weight. To be, I want to see this data broken out a little bit in more detail to include duplexes.
So the duplexes aren't under townhomes and plexes?
It might be, yeah. That would actually make more sense than having it under the other. Yeah, I think the other would be mobile home, manufactured home, and RV.
Yeah, yeah, we have a lot. It's not a surprise to me. If we assume that they took into consideration manufactured homes, there are quite a few. There's quite a few manufactured homes.
And you know, for us, you know, we have the, we do treat manufactured homes and stick-built homes slightly different per code, but at the end of the day, they're.
They're a single family.
Single family, yeah. So I'm curious a bit more about what this breakdown means. And I did go to the behind-the-scenes to some of these charts, and this was not one that I went behind the scenes. So I don't have too many meta answers to this data.
So the multifamily, excuse me for asking, but that's more apartment-type?
Yeah.
And we have very few.
And that's definitely some policy thing that I want to bring up in the future is, you know, looking at our policy for multi-unit housing and see if we can, you know, is there any changes? Are there any obstacles that we're imposing that other cities around us are not imposing? And that's why that we see this difference, it's a possibility. So I know this is a.
One more question. Does this chart incorporate condominiums?
Yeah, my estimation is that condominiums would be under the multifamily.
Multifamily.
No. And it. Yeah. And I don't know why it's not being reflected, and it might be.
Maybe it's town.
It wouldn't fall under the single-family detached, but.
Maybe it's.
I will note that and have answers in an email.
Okay.
Yeah, so this is one that was an interesting point of data, and this was one I did go behind the scenes a little bit more. But the relationship between seasonal and non-seasonal housing, and this is county-wide. But the trend that we see here is that, you know, due to both the county having imposing rules over licensing and also the city, we see that there has been a decrease for seasonal housing, and there has been an increase to non-seasonal housing. I did some of the math, and that's what is in the chart next to it. So there was a decrease of 800 seasonal units and an increase of 742 non-seasonal units. So there has been a loss of net units between 2020 and 2023 county-wide. So I thought that was an interesting trend, and I would want to look more into it, but.
Where would someone's, where would like second, non-primary homes, second homes fall in that?
Yeah, the second homes would be non-seasonal homes.
It would be non.
Oh, no, no, sorry, those would be seasonal, apologies. So seasonal would be short-term rentals, second homes.
Don't rent it, but they're, it's a second address for them, yes.
Yeah, and it also includes vacant units, which I thought was interesting. So in this, those are the three categories going into the seasonal, yeah.
We don't have Rockaway Beach-specific data on this.
A little bit, yes and no. In the future, I'm preparing the data report on short-term rentals for city council. And so we'll dive into some of that data a little more deeply.
I would guess that we haven't had a drop in seasonal housing in Rockaway Beach.
Yeah, I can't speak to that right now, but yeah. I will, I hopefully will have answers to that in the future. This is the data specific for Rockaway. That 61% of our housing stock is seasonal housing. And this is another one I looked behind the scenes on. And so from our roughly 1,800 housing units in the city, 700 of those are full-time, occupied full-time, and then 1,000 are seasonal.
I'm sorry, could you repeat those numbers?
Yeah, the, yeah, the number for total housing units is 1,842, if you're being precise. The margin of error is around 200 units, so it's again, a pretty big margin of error. And then for occupied full-time, so not. Uh, and then for uh, occupied uh, full time, uh, so non, non uh, seasonal housing occupied units is seven hundred twenty one, with again, a hundred, a hundred unit margin of error. And then for vacant or as short term rents or second homes is a thousand one hundred twenty one units. This is for American Community Survey data.
Does Rockaway not have another source on number of houses, like an internal tally?
Uh, we have an internal tally for short term rentals, but not for second homes.
Uh, just total housing.
Oh.
Of the city?
Yeah, that that is a great question, and it's something that I I've been trying to look into. We have a total tally of meters, uh, but that includes a a commercial uh, area. So this is definitely something that we want to refine in the future and have our own numbers. Uh, but for the time being, we're relying on 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 these numbers.
I think it gets even a little more complicated because some of our commercial water meters have both living quarters and commercial in the same building.
Yeah, yeah, we we definitely we, yeah, this is definitely something that I want to look into more. You know, an avenue is looking at occupancy permit data and see how many have been issued. The the problem is that the county's records, they, you know, they they don't go all the way back, so there, we might have some um, units that have occupancy permits that, you know, have been occupied since the twenties.
What about just like a, like a mailing list for all residences in the city, like how many addresses?
Yeah, and then, you know, that's another issue that since not all our uh, addresses are mailing addresses, a lot are P O boxes, so that, um, yeah, it it it's not, it's not something that we can't do, it's just it it's not very straightforward uh, accounting and, you know, you, uh, some of the things that we've seen too is that, you know, our 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 the, the um, the detail of our records only goes so far back too, so we have like some duplexes that are only being counted as one unit in our records, and so there there's a lot of like, uh, um, just on our end, being able to produce that number is not straightforward, unfortunately. Um, so another uh, interesting data point is the median home value uh, for Rockaway and for the county in general, this is a a trend that we see nationwide, but especially in Oregon, is this very uh, large change in in home value in in the ten year period, it has over over doubled, uh, which is good news for some and and not good news for others, uh, and that is just some uh, a fact that we cannot uh, change. Um, uh, one of the things that, you know, more or less, this has been countywide. Um, there, you know, I I didn't go into detail to figure out exactly what percentage changed for each jurisdiction, but uh, just from a glance at it, uh, you can see that this is not uh, specific to Rockaway, uh, but just the the county in general.
Ours went up a hundred and twenty four percent.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I was interested because we bought our lot in twenty fifteen for fifty five thousand dollars. I doubt now if that lot would sell for based on these numbers. It's it's amazing to me how how it's changed in that ten years.
Yeah, and and I know this is one of, one of the aspects that are referred to in the like, what we're calling the housing crisis is that the home value or median home value has drastically increased, but wages have have not matched. So, you know, the uh, the the wall to access for for both uh, young folks or for or for those who have been long term renters uh, is is becoming harder and harder as time goes on.
Yeah.
Yeah.
When, I I have a quick question. When we, uh, when you or whatever look at housing, do you look, um, do you consider well, apartments being rental housing? So you're considering owner occupied and rental housing?
Yeah.
And do you know where we, Rockaway, is that a do you unders, know, I I guess that's on one of these things.
The, the, one of, one of the things is is looking at both uh, um, uh, housing burden for home, um, uh, more mortgage housing burden for for uh, homeowners, and then we also look at rent burden. So there there is some distinction in in the data, you know, in uh, housing access to both. But yes, but both are definitely to be considered. Uh, and this here is the the median uh, rent for Rockaway. Um, that was not my experience when I was looking to rent. I can say that much. But it, you know.
Something.
I did find some.
Amazing.
Uh, it it compared to to Tillamook County as a whole, it's higher um, average, but then as, you know, we're second highest to Manzanita, uh, which I thought was uh, interesting and, you know, there's uh, and this data was not, you know, we can't see exactly what the bell curve is, so we, I don't know how much is like uh, uh, low, low uh, monthly rents or or, you know, really high, and if if there's a skew in the in this average or not. Oh, sorry.
I found that that um, statistic there to be really hard to believe, the, you know, the price of rent. When you were looking, did you find that it was much higher?
Yeah, I, I, yeah, this, again, it's a, uh, one, my own experience at a very small portion of of time within a year. Uh, but, you know, one of the options was like three thousand a month, and and then, you know, there was nothing, nothing around this range.
That's kind of kind of closer to what I would have expected. I.
This is.
This to be.
He's old too.
But we also have some um, lower income renting rental places in town. Uh, and we have some apartments that are studio or one bedroom. And I think sometimes we're thinking of like the two bedroom, three bedroom, one or two baths or whatever. But we have quite a few of the uh, smaller.
So that's what I think for rent. Bringing the the average down is what you're thinking?
Yes, yes.
Okay.
That that would be my.
Just to give you an example, a lot of people don't even know this is an apartment complex, but across from the St. Mary's Catholic Church, there's a tan building, and most people think it's a house, but it's actually four small apartments, and we have that dotted throughout town, so I think that brings our average down.
And and to what City Planner Taffy has said, this is a median, not an average.
Yeah.
And so our average may in fact be much higher than this. This is just the midpoint. I said, an array of data from the lowest rent to the highest rent.
Right.
Figure out where's that midpoint, which is, which I think is, from a statistical standpoint, is the better measure of central tendency than than an average, because averages get skewed by outliers, but.
Okay.
So we may not have a normal bell curve uh, here in 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 Rockaway Beach, and I wouldn't be surprised if we don't.
Yeah, and it'd be, again, to the, there is data out there, this is Zillow data, and I I know that they have a little more refined, so we could see like for this type of rental unit, what is the, what are the numbers? Again, in small jurisdictions, it's it's harder to have that data be super accurate and not circumstantial as my experiences.
Following up ADUs, um, because I know that there has in the past several years, been a lot more interest in Rockaway Beach. Is that reflected, I'm wondering?
It it should be.
Okay.
Yeah, I I don't, I don't know what the impact and, you know, this, that would be a more like research project to figure out how uh, the trends have changed and then, you know, how the policies have impacts, or are we still waiting to see the impacts of policies? Uh, so, yeah, getting, getting now to the relationship between income and housing uh, is is uh, a cost burden. And so we have both cost burden and severe cost burden. Uh, so what that means is that for cost burden is that thirty percent of of a household income is going to housing costs. So that not only includes rent, but also includes electricity and and, you know, uh, any other costs that are going into into accessing housing. And then severe cost burden is fifty percent uh, of of a household's income going to housing costs. These numbers are calculated by uh, the Housing and Urban Development uh, Department, so these are federally federally calculated. Um, and they they make some assumptions of like, this is assuming that the household's diet is only potatoes and rice and a couple other, like one, one uh, uh, one car per household. There there's a a slew of assumptions going into this, calculating this number. Um, but rigor, so it it's alarming that it's high, uh, but it it's only, it's it's a optimistic uh, calculation. And it in reality is a lot higher. Um, again, this is a, this is a trend uh, throughout Oregon. Uh, but some of these uh, numbers help us understand a little bit better uh, what what are the experiences of residents? So this, this is for mortgage cost burden, so for those who are uh, um, uh, have a mortgage, uh, and um, this is home homeowners. And and going to to Commissioner Maxfield's previous point, uh, you know, it's also based on income. So someone's purchasing power, they may appear as, you know, uh, housing cost burden based on their income, but they might have a a plan already to to pay for that cost, so. So it's, it goes both ways in in accuracy.
Hmm.
Yeah. And but one of the interesting components of this was uh, uh, looking at the relationship between severe and 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 nonsevere cost burden. Uh, and for renters, it's a, it's a very different picture. It's a lot higher, uh, which is uh, uh, expected. There is uh, obviously some outliers, which would be Bay City and Manzanita. Um, I'm not su- super sure what to do with the, this, this graph for those jurisdictions, so I'm not worrying too much about it, uh, but I I'm concentrating on Rockaway. Uh, we we see that, you know, there's, there's a severe cost, uh, the high levels of cost burden and then uh, including severe cost burden, but this means that fifty percent of renters in Rockaway have some form of of housing burden, which is uh, very large, uh, and but on trend with with uh, statewide um, numbers. So we have, we have a problem, but it's not unique to us. It's uh, what I take away from this. Uh, and yeah, well, this is definitely, you know, ranges where we we have uh, some, some power to do uh, policy to go over. Uh, so, may I?
Oh, sorry. No, I I I know there's no Rockaway specific data, but I I found it very fascinating, um, the the commuting data.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And how far people commute, which speaks to work with Commissioner Maxfield said, and you said, we build more housing, we probably suck more people in, because then they wouldn't have to commute as far.
So, yeah. That, uh, I I didn't include it in the side six, they didn't have Rockaway.
Not Rockaway specifically.
But one of, that that is, does go into account for needed housing.
Yeah.
Uh, for for the new Oregon Housing Needs Analysis, so some of that, you know, uh, commuting data uh, is take part of the larger equation for determining housing need. Again, whether or not how accurate it is, uh, um, yet to be seen, I suppose.
And I didn't see this data, data on there, but uh, last year I found some PSU that, uh, housing data that said about thirty one percent of the full time residents in Rockaway are renters. So, and I I I think that's kind of high myself, but that might reflect the lower um, rent cost.
Yeah, and yeah, one of the things that they didn't include in this report was the, you know, percentage of homeowners versus renters in the city. Uh, we do have specific data for that for Rockaway, but it wasn't included in the report, so I didn't, I didn't bring it up here tonight.
Thanks. Because we're jumping to thirty one, I even emailed, I don't know if it went through, I'm terrible with tech. Um, Exhibit twenty three, low capture rate, medium capture rate. What's a capture rate, please?
Uh, which exhibit was that?
Exhibit twenty three.
I'm sorry, twenty three, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's a great question. I didn't look into that very much. From my understanding, it would be um, uh, based, yeah, based on on commuting, so how many of of the city's uh, workforce is located within a jurisdiction, but uh, I I I need to look at it more before I could give you a good answer. If you send me an email, I'll be able to reply to that.
Okay, yeah, I I could not tell what capture rate meant, thank you. And uh, one more, Exhibit thirty, just before this one. Um, it says, single family detached, single family attached. What is that? Because I would think that would be like a duplex. What?
Yeah, uh, that, um, a a single family attached would be a duplex that has gone through a a middle housing partition, so they're technically both considered individual lots.
So parent lot to child lot?
Yeah, I I, again, I I'll have better answers if I look more into it, um.
Thank you.
There, there's a lot of um, perks with the data capturing, because the federal data calls things some one way, Oregon data calls it a different way, and then, you know, our experience of it might be called it something else, so, uh, to look into. So this is the uh, Exhibit thirty one, which is the projections uh, for housing by region. We're in the north region, uh, basically what they did is they divided the county into three uh, quadrants, uh, and um, north, central, south. Uh, so our north uh, extension from Garibaldi uh, all the way Manzanita. Um, and we'll talk a little bit more about these uh, numbers, but this would be for the whole region. I I found it to be underestimated for a twenty year count based on the information provided by Oregon State. Um, uh, the, our our official Oregon Housing Needs Analysis target numbers. Uh, you know, for some of these uh, areas, we would surpass the whole regions, so I I I have, I had a lot of questions about this, but I wanted to present it here because I imagine in the future, we're going to have these questions pop up. Yeah, an interesting thing about this number is it includes both city limits and urban growth boundary. Most of the data that we've looked at so far is specific to our city limits and not our, uh, whole urban growth boundary.
Hmm.
Um, should have mentioned earlier, but talking about it now. Right, next. Uh, so the, these are the, oh, they're small, I apologize. The, these are the numbers from the Oregon Housing Needs Analysis. Um, the, these are the numbers that were prepared for us by the Department of Administrative Services. Um, they have a one year estimate and a twenty year estimate for housing need. Um, are one, I I was very confused when I looked at these numbers at first, because I was like, uh, thirty three times twenty is not uh, five hundred fifty three. Um, uh, but for whatever reason, that first year is uh, weighed, weighed heavier, uh, so they is a more ambitious first year uh, target compared to the twenty year target.
It's not a smooth curve.
It's not a smooth curve, yes. Um, here, what I found interesting is that, and and not to surprise, but our largest housing need uh, is between that eighty uh, uh, AMI area median income and that a hundred and twenty percent. So that'd be like the the workforce housing range. Um, it it's our our largest need. Um, within this, this uh, uh, understanding this a little bit better, the a hundred and, over a hundred twenty and uh, eighty to a hundred twenty, though that's the range where um, uh, market rate housing usually plays in, so any new housing is usually built within that range. Anything below uh, eighty percent, we're looking at at a capital A, like subsidized affordable housing or or uh, uh, other forms of of affordable housing. Uh, and that's a lot harder to produce, but we still have a need to produce that housing, so. Um, the, that, that's where we, our, our intervention would be most significant. However, again, our largest need is between that eighty to a hundred and twenty uh, percent AMI. And uh, you'll notice that uh, some of these number, well, maybe not, because my numbers were so small, but uh, are the ranges for twenty year forecast for, for, this is for urban growth boundary, did not match with what the, was included in the, or countywide report. Um, so definitely like, and as we go forward in the future with them and and creating our our production strategies to make sure we clarify these, these points and and find out exactly why there is that, there is that discrepancy. Yeah, apologies, I'll make the numbers larger and send out an email with them. I bet you all want to, want to see these and and sit with these a little bit longer. And that's, that's it. I'm happy to answer any general questions or.
Well, I I concur with what Commissioner Johnson said. This is a great report. This is a great report, really fascinating to read through. And I am also a bit of a data nerd. I like data too. And so, and then trying to tease it out and kind of connect it. It was, yeah. Thank you for it and thank you for your presentation.
Thanks for entertaining me for an hour now.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Good luck.
Yep.
Something that I really noticed, but Rockaway Beach is kind of Goldilocks, aren't we? We're, I don't know. I think we're reasonable. I'm just going to mention, because I've been doing this on my own off and on for a while, that we're going to be discussing what our intent is for what we want to pursue as a city for supporting our needs for housing. And I know that various vicinities in Oregon, rural, middle, they're doing some very interesting things for, let's say, an obvious one is rezoning land, but we won't go there. But let's say multiple unit property tax exemption, tax increment financing, TIFs for affordable housing, looking at our SDCs, I just, or the SDC for ADUs. I know we've talked about that in the past, but certainly promotion of affordable housing. So is that something that we're going to be looking at more as to how creative we can be to attain these goals?
That would be definitely all things that we need to consider. And that would be part of the housing production strategies. You know, we'd go through considering different policies and didn't talk too much about them in this presentation, but in that was different categories of intervention for meeting our housing needs. And, you know, there were preliminary policies, but these are all different options. And I know the county, for example, they've been looking at a lot of different tax programs or even loan programs for capital A affordable housing projects to increase their feasibility. And that's definitely something I've been talking with Parker at the county, who takes us on and see how we can fit in with what they've already adopted, or if we need to, you know, have our own, our own changes or policies. There's definitely a give and take when it comes to making decisions, when it comes to tax policies. So we need to make sure we find what is correct for our needs.
Tillmark County has had some success. I was so happy to see what I didn't see what they were doing specifically, but bravo for them.
Yeah. We don't want to spoil anything, but we do have some very interesting projects coming down the pipeline for workforce housing.
Okay. All righty. Well, I think appreciate the analysis and we will look forward to progress. And move on to planning commission comments and concerns. Recognize Commissioner Johnson.
First of all, I'd like to remind everyone that we don't have a meeting next month. And I hope that city planner happy has a very, I am awake.
Thank you.
And it goes well. And also, there's been some talk in town about the dark sky ordinance possibility. And I just wanted to raise that just to make sure that it doesn't die. I understand that the city has a lot of work on their plate right now, but in the future, I'd like to see that maybe the city council referring that issue to the planning commission. You know, of course, it's not a priority at this point, but, you know, there are residents in town that would like to see the issue addressed. There are, there are some really good online sources to learn more about dark sky ordinances and dark sky places in Oregon and how that has developed in certain areas and how they actually got their, their ordinances done. In fact, I get, I have, there's a dark sky, international dark sky group that you can get information on and also dark sky Oregon, if I can find that. Sorry, if I can find it on here. If anyone's interested, you know, I would recommend that you Google it and you'll be able to find dark sky Oregon to get more information on that. But it's, you know, the trend is growing in Oregon to try to preserve dark skies. And, you know, we would be, you know, at the forefront of it when the city has time. No hurry.
Copious fair time.
Yeah. Thank you.
Mr. Lannion.
Thank you. Absolutely agree. And I'm wondering if we could reach out to TPUD for, it's the streetlights alone, a lot of them are just exposed. I mean, they, they don't down shaft and that would, it seems to me be a fairly simple thing, or at least we could talk about it. But TPUD, they're very progressive and I imagine they could be a big help to help, help us figure it out. I read that NEVI, that electric vehicle grant program, they're doing a second round for chargers. And they've made some really nice changes to what they're doing, like there's no, within a 50-mile limitation. It made me think right away of our marinas, perhaps to have chargers. There are other, anyway, it's worth looking at the new round of charger and they're pinpointing Highway 20, 26, 101. So yeah, let's, let's do that. Thanks.
Commissioner Winchester.
Thank you so much for the both of your presentations. I felt like I understood it so much better after you explained it than I did when I was reading things, especially the Muba stuffs.
Thank you.
Hearing it multiple times, guesses, so I don't need him. So I appreciate it.
Mr. Hess.
I reiterate what Commissioner Winchester was saying about your explanation of everything. Thank you. And I also, those two things, those two presentations are like fighting each other. Wetland and build more houses. You know, it's like, oh my God. So I just really hope that we can find a solution here in town that preserves our beauty and also builds more, you know, housing. And I want us to be careful about it.
Okay. Commissioner Maxfield.
I'll just add on to the dark skies thing, saying it's important for wildlife. I also am personally really like, I wish that the beach was darker at night for stargazing. There are some hotels that have extremely bright floodlights that just blanket the whole beach. And I think that that's something of which you consider a separate ordinance about, about commercial lighting in the city. And there's a lot of concerns about flashing lights and stuff like that. But I think that the beach stargazing experience should be an important part of the tourist experience here and it's something that we should value and protect. And then I just want to, I guess, be a little bit of a Debbie Downer on the numbers that we looked at. Like I personally like, am very skeptical of that number just based on how much they move around from year to year and how small our community is. I think that there's a lot of value in talking through, but I think that we would be irresponsible to put too much stock in those numbers and not, like, we have a lot of local knowledge in this room, a lot of like experience and awareness of what's going on in the community. And I would urge all of us to make plans for our community based on the vision that we want to achieve rather than like a PSU economic forecast of what our community needs. I think that we have the opportunity to dream and develop into a totally different community if we wanted to. I'm not advocating one way or the other, but I would just encourage us to, to make these decisions based on what we want for our community. And I personally think that we need to work towards building a more sustainable year-round economy. And I think that housing should be considered holistically with things like education, like school system, jobs, economic development in general. I think that, you know, to Charles's point about, or Mayor bringing the point about commuting times, if we build housing, but we don't have jobs, people are still going to be commuting to Hillsboro for jobs and stuff. So like, we need to do all this together. So I hope we can dream together, each of us.
Thank you. Commissioner Paul.
Let's go back to same as by the time Commissioner Johnson and Maxwell said on the dark skies. I'd mentioned it a few months ago, something that I'm really passionate about. And if it's something that we want to put a task force together to look at it, I'd be happy to be on it. And I'm sure some other people and some other members of the community would be as well. And then city planner Tapia, I want to congratulate you on three months and you've been doing fabulous job. I mean, I'm pretty new too, but I really appreciate all the numbers and everything that you've given us. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Planning Commission Lee Zon McGinnis.
Yeah, I have been taking notes. This has been a very informative meeting here. So first of all, about the SDC fees, League of Oregon Cities has a good training about what SDCs fees are and why they're calculated. And it's actually guided pretty heavily by state law. We have some leeway, but there's a lot of state law about it. And so planning commissioners can also access LOC trainings as well as city councilors. So I just would throw that out if anybody's interested in that. They did have a few months ago, anyway, an online training. Also about the dark skies, I have talked with Barbara Trout, who is our elected commissioner on the TPUD about it. So anyone can reach out to her and get her input and help on that. It is in our strategic plan, but as the mayor and I were just discussing today, it's, it was ranked lowest on the, it's on the transportation and infrastructure category, and it was ranked 11 out of 11 as far as a priority because things like new water pipes and things like that were ranked higher. But so effectively, city council has already said, this is in the strategic plan and we've ranked it. So it is something worth looking at, as Commissioner Johnson said, when there's time. And then I also wanted to mention something. There was a speaker online who talked to the planning commission about employment ordinances. And I just want to mention that all employment ordinances and issues are, fall within the city council. The planning commission doesn't have any purview over them. And so I didn't want to put that, you to have that burden on your back. Planning commission deals with land use only and not with personnel issues. So, and in case any of you are interested, we do have, I'm sure everyone already knows this, we do have robust policies for employees and for hiring. And our, many of our employees are member of a union, the AFSCME Union, American Federation of State, County, Municipal Employees, and they have a collective bargaining agreement, which is pretty thick and public information that, that has a lot to do with the movement around positions in the city. And then we also have a very thick policy manual for hiring and work and practices. And both of those have been reviewed and approved by city council. So just wanted to take that off your plate. That's not something city planning commission has to worry about.
Great. All right. And Mayor McNeely.
Thank you. Yeah, I do want to talk a little bit about Daniel Hallett's comments. First, I appreciate Daniel's position. He's been saying this thing since I became mayor. So this is something that is clearly very important to, to Mr. Hallett. But I've now run two campaigns that involve walking the streets and talking to voters, and not one voter said to me, you know, we've got a problem with our hiring practices. I've never got an email about it. Nobody stopped me in the street. I don't think this is an issue that's resonating in our community in spite of Mr. Hallett's interest in it. When I became mayor, we had city manager Shepherd, we had office manager Becca Hearth, we had a planning tech, we had a billing clerk and a contract planner. Did I get that right back in January of 2023?
Probably pretty close, yeah.
Okay, there might have been one other, but anyways, fast forward to today, city manager Shepherd has built an incredible team. We have a rock star city recorder. She knows I'm a big fan and I tell her that all the time. I don't mean to embarrass you, but I am a big fan. We now have, we had Mary Johnson, now Mary Mertz, was brought in as city planner and she turned the planning department around. In 2023, when I became mayor, it was the least liked department and the most complained about department in the city. Is that fair? If I say something wrong, please correct me. And she very quickly turned it around to be a part of a department that was, was well appreciated and, and we weren't getting complaints. That since evolved, we now have, have city planner Tapia, and I'm excited that, and I expect, not that we had a problem in public works, but it's only going to get better with her moving over there. We have a rock star finance director. We've all heard about what she's done with, with moving cash surpluses into the, the local government investment fund. And we actually earned more interest last fiscal year from that than we earned in property taxes. So we have, we have an individual focused on short-term rentals. We have the billing clerk here. Kale has been promoted into, into a new role. So the staff we have built over the years is incredible. So I don't see a problem in our hiring practices. And if you haven't, just go read my state of the city message to see how things are going, how great things are going. So I'll just conclude by saying, I'm not hearing from the residents that they're concerned about our hiring practices. Full stop.
Thank you. So people who know that I've joined Trailkeepers of Oregon and spent my first time, the event was actually co-mingled with the salmonberry trail and Mary was with that. We had one visitor that took the hike all the way down to the Big Cedar. The event was kind of interesting to me because I talked to more than 50 people as I started down the trail or coming back from the trail about what does, what was, what was that about? You know, how did it get built? How was it financed? Some of the construction details. I had a picture book of things at the Big Cedar itself, but the one thing that's missing, and I'm going to rectify that at the next one, is pictures of what's there, the elderberry, the salmonberry, the salaw, you know, the things that they ask questions about because they're hanging right there, you know? And they wanted to know what was actually, that they would see. So it wasn't as much about the boardwalk itself, which is amazing, but it's what they're going to see as a part of that. So the comments were incredible. Also, Davis Chair has been very successful, both Mary Mertz, the other Mary Mertz on our Rockaway volunteers. And I have been working on that since January and we've had over 50 users now since it was first instituted. And we're going to have an in-depth training session on Saturday, this coming Saturday at 1:00 for anybody who wants to make it. It's also been additionally scheduled for Sunday at 2:00, to where we're going to have people actually sit in the chair and use it and feel what it's like, as well as indicate what are the things you need to do to get people safe into the chair and knowledgeable. Some people come and they know what they're, they're doing. They've used an electric chair before or a wheeled vehicle. But others, it's a new experience to them and to kind of get them used to the control and what it does and how fast it will go and so on. So it's going to be an incredible event. The Davis Chair Foundation has gotten a big grant and was able to purchase five additional wheel vehicles. So that's extremely exciting and we got one of them to replace our old one. And so it's been very successful. So, all right, may I have a motion to adjourn our meeting?
I make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Is second.
I'll second it.
Well, it's been moved and seconded. Let's vote how the commissioners. Let's vote how the commissioners, Commissioner Cole.
Yes.
Commissioner Hess.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Lanyon.
Yes.
Commissioner Maxfield.
Yes.
Commissioner Winchester.
Yes.
And I vote yes. The motion carries. We are going to adjourn at 6:49 on Thursday, September 16th, 2025.